Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I'm the mayor of the city of Vader. On behalf of the city council, we welcome all of you to this regularly scheduled Vader City Council meeting, which I would declare open at 6:00 PM. We'll proceed with that with our -- wait. We had a roll call in the workshop and a pledge. I would suggest that we defer and proceed with our agenda. Any objections to that? We will proceed with the mayor's report. I would begin with the report on the Fourth of July planning. Very excited to report that the newly formed committee has met twice. I've been attending it and a lot of energy, a lot of positivity. The fireworks have been purchased and Reggie Smith is in charge of that. And a banner is going to be -- is in the process of being made to put across 506 with some patriotic flags that would adorn telephone poles. And the festivities will begin at eight in the evening to avoid the heat of the day. There will be no parade, but there's going to be an emcee, there'll be music, there'll be family-friendly games, and then just before the blast off fireworks, there'll be a national anthem, the scout troop flag-raising ceremony, who we haven't contacted yet.
Yes, you have.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Your wife's been working behind your back.
That's a good thing. Yeah, so it's -- there'll be lots of prizes for kids as families come and set their buckets out. We'll entice the kids to engage in some family-friendly social games and activities. So that's the report. The second item was the annual report filing status. And Jill, I know our city clerk's been working feverishly to get that annual report completed. Would you like to share with the council?
Yes. So every year, we have to turn in the annual report to the state auditor's office of our budget and expenditures from the previous year, and we have until May 30th or 31st to do that. This is the first year I got it done a week ahead of time. But we've been working hard on it and used a lot of the information that we got in our last audit that helped us, you know, do a better -- make a better product for the state auditors, but we have turned it in. Diane has checked everything, and we'll have copies of all of that available to council. And if I'm really good, we'll get it on the website so everybody can see it. That's the plan. And you can see how, what the state auditors look at and explanation and everything of where we're at and as of the end of 2015, so.
Yeah, well done, and congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a critical element in an annual city administration. That concludes the mayor's report. Let's proceed now with any comments, reports from the council. Any?
Well, of course.
Okay.
I have a brief comment to the gentleman in green in the back. Got a phone call from someone, and I promised I would say this tonight for him. He had an officer shooting in his backfield, who he approached. The person said he was an officer, and when he asked to see his ID, he did not have one and went scurrying off with his gun. The sheriff's office was called, and response was in an hour. Complain, complain, complain about time, and no report was taken. And so I just briefly wanted to -- I was given that information today and ask if I would comment about that tonight. So, and I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay, do we note it?
Good.
Thank you. All right, then, let's proceed with our agenda. You'll note a special report from Jolie O'Rourke. She contacted City Hall today and indicated that she will not be coming to the city of Vader. Would you care to elaborate on that?
Not because she doesn't want to, but because she found out that she's not allowed to do that, to campaign on the city, official city property. So anyways, she learned that she can't do that at city halls and go do that. So she apologized profusely, and she said, "I just can't do it. I don't want to get you guys in trouble." She doesn't want to get herself in trouble, so.
That's a good thought, okay. So with that, let's proceed with the agenda approval. I don't personally have any changes on it.
I do. If we could please put down on number eight, if we could please talk about event packets slash paperwork slash timeframe, et cetera. We're back on event packets, insurance, that type of thing. Conversation again.
Okay, so you would need to make that in form of a motion?
I make a -- in a motion? I make a motion that we add event slash insurance packets as item number eight on the agenda.
Okay, so you heard the motion submitted by Mrs. Costello to add item number eight relating to event packets and insurance matters.
Correct.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Wilson. Do we have any additional commentary with that second? Is this a topic that the council would want to address in the meeting, or would it be better with the city administration?
Actually, I think it's going to fall right in with the discussion about the fee schedule. We're back on that park thing. I'm not through with that park thing.
Okay.
So it's kind of going to go along with that. We may even talk about it in seven, which would eliminate eight, but I just don't know if it's going to come up or not, so.
So with that, any other commentary, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed if that motion is taken? Any other changes? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as modified for May 26, 2016.
Okay, now Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the agenda as modified. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Queer, I think. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now approval of minutes from our previous city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 12, 2016.
Okay, Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the minutes. As noted, we have a second.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the end of May 2016, the amount of $1,956.57 for a total for May of $28,690.07.
Mr. Schei has submitted a motion for council consideration. As noted, do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded again by Mr. Wilson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? As noted, the motion is carried. Now it's time for a public comment. Do we have anybody who's expressed interest in that?
Okay, we have two. One, the topics are no drugs and McMurphy Park. Those ones we want to.
Now, there is item number one on the agenda. Might be one of the topics for a public comment. And who has signed up for it?
Joy Flynn.
Oh. My sense would be you might want to hold off on that because the council will likely grant time for a public comment.
Okay, sure.
If you thought that would be wise. What was the other?
Mae Hyner for -- it just says McMurphy Park.
Okay.
I just have a quick comment, and it's -- I went down to McMurphy Park the other day, and I would like to tell you that I have never seen the park looking so good, and I would just like to thank the maintenance John for doing such an awesome job.
Wow.
Perfect.
I'd almost want to break into applause. Well, isn't that a pleasure, to hear such a positive comment? I actually took eight grandchildren to the park this afternoon and was marveling how well manicured it looks, so I would echo those sentiments. It's a tribute to the community of Vader and our public works employees and all our employees. So with that, let's proceed with our city business. And it was my -- after considerable effort and on the city's part with Mr. Brandon Milton, I met with Mr. Milton last week and have an idea of what Mr. Milton has expressed interest in sharing with the city council. So I felt it would be appropriate for Mr. Milton, if you aren't opposed to it, to go to the podium and share your thoughts and insights with residents of the city of Vader.
Is this live?
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
All right. For those I haven't had a chance to meet yet, my name is Brandon. I own the industrial property on the west side of town. And I've been in progress, working towards developing the property for the last several years. And I wanted to take some time and thank you guys for listening, by the way, just to update you on progress and also be available for questions, so if there's any interest or dialogue, I'd be happy to answer those questions. The last few years have been frankly pretty challenging for me. I have developed probably 90% of the infrastructure that I need for my building and for my auto parts business, but I haven't been able to finish it. And I think that the other big element in the room is a proposal that I brought a few years ago to do marijuana development. And I think that's been the source of a lot of the acrimony and challenge and division, both in the city, the community, my ability to work with public officials. And I guess if it served any purpose, it certainly gave me plenty of time to reflect on whatever the universe has been trying to tell me, whatever lessons I need to learn from these last few years. My conclusion is that I need to be in better alignment with the community, the elected officials that represent the community. And I think it's still possible to have my original vision of what I call a win-win, you know, a win for my business and a win for the community that is hosting my business. But I don't consider a win-win to be like 50-50 or 60-40 even. Like, I feel like the -- this issue of marijuana has been well-intentioned on my part. I think it had the potential to deliver jobs and taxes and stuff that I thought would be a big win for the community, and I thought it would be a good business for me to be involved in. But I didn't come from a background of marijuana, you know? I just saw it as a business opportunity, and I frankly had no idea how controversial it was going to be and how poorly received it was going to be on the part of many people on the council and the community. And as I look back on that, I mostly just feel bad about having played a role in something so divisive. And as I look at the future and the potential I see for my business, I see that the future of that and the success of that needs to be tied to a vision that can feel much more unified with leadership here and the community. So with that in mind, I have moved my marijuana license out of Vader and I'm focused on it at this point and just in bringing my original auto parts business to town. I believe still in the ability of that business to deliver on the promise of win-win, but I believe that that promise will only be realized when we can be in better alignment with the vision for not just business in Vader, but the kind of business that feels like a good fit for this community. So that's really my simple message. And I'd be happy to talk at greater length or more detail about what that looks like or answer anybody's questions.
When Mr. Milton expressed those sentiments to me last week, I could scarcely comprehend what I was hearing, because I have been engaged with Brandon Milton and this business enterprise for nine years, I think, and don't know that there was anybody who fought harder to support the arrival of the absolute German auto parts facility here. And then to have engaged in this divisive, contentious issue relating to marijuana, I was not prepared psychologically, emotionally, to hear Mr. Milton's sudden reversal of it. And so, but from my perspective, it is more consistent with the majority of the residents of the city of Vader. And I commended Mr. Milton for this dramatic reversal in the development of his property. And it is consistent with the city's effort to support this. We've acquired over $100,000 of money and invested in connecting him to the facility, the utilities in this community. So for me, if it's genuine, represents a rather historic, a potential watershed moment for the city of Vader, because I'm not going to tell the city council what to do, but I would strongly return, suggest that we return to as much support as we can legally provide Mr. Milton to bring about this vision that you've shared with us. And because it may very well be a spark, a catalyst, that many of us have hoped would happen in this community. Because there isn't a community in southwest Lewis County that has more infill land within our city limits. We have more than Winlock, more than Toledo, more than Nepaline. If we were to manage it carefully and wisely, if we could get a business that would provide this spark, and if we get our waste treatment system, we get our water system bank, who knows what could happen? So I, for one, have had a hard time containing myself for this meeting. Of course, I do love talking, but I'm a skeptical person, and respect and civility, I think, are gifted, but for me, trust has to be earned. And, but I believe that hopefully, we as a city will be willing to experiment with this newfound perspective in this work.
Well, I said on the council, when three council people went up to his establishment in Seattle, and I was all for German Auto, like he first started. Then all of a sudden, everything started being built and built and built, and the city spent money for the sewer, and nothing ever happened. So this is what my thinking is. I want to see documentation that can be to the city of Vader, that you're going to go to the original thing of hiring 200 people. This is what I was told on the ground around the city, and put German Auto in. And then later on, we started the marijuana deal. Then here recently, I've heard reports that you're going to go back to German Auto, and also that you have all the building permits that were signed. Is that correct?
In fairness to my plans, I've never gone away from German Auto. That's the -- that's the original business that's been on the building permit that I filed in 2010. That's been on my water application. None of that's ever changed. You know, I think one of the misconceptions is that I decided to stop German Auto and start marijuana. I, you know, my goal is just to bring business here, you know? And I'd like it to be German Auto. I'd like to have other businesses, but I've realized that I need to do that in, you know, in better alignment with what the predominant values and opinions are in town. You know, I don't want to be like an isolated pocket of discontent on the west side of town. I'd like to, I mean, I'm used to getting along with people. So whether this is an idea that's popular with 40, 50, whatever, it's like 60% of -- I don't know. You know, I just know it's divisive, and I don't want to be a part of divisive. You know, divisive has not gotten me anywhere. You know, divisive has led to, you know, it's just bred discontent. It's stalled my project. It has not served me from a business standpoint. It has not felt good to me from a moral or emotional standpoint, and I don't think it's served the community. So I'm very interested in finding a strategy that can meet all the goals that came with my original proposal.
I think that was an interesting comment that Mr. Wilson made about the permits. You've expressed to me, perhaps you would share your thoughts with the council, about your willingness to adhere to the permit requisites of the community.
Yeah, of course. I mean, I'm not interested in breaking laws or running counter to, you know, either the spirit or the letter of permitting. So my permit has been expired for years, and it's due to a simple reason, which is water. So I cannot, I cannot finalize my project until I have water, which means I can't renew my permit and finish my building. You know, like, you build up to a certain point, and then you need inspections, then you build a little bit more, you inspect, and so on. So I'm at a certain point, which is most of the way done with my project, but I can't complete that round of inspections without an active permit. And without a ready path to water, I can't, you know, I can't file for my permitting and get that done. You know, so I'm kind of in this catch-22 where I clearly need water in order to get my certificate of occupancy and to finish my permitting, but when I have no ready path to water, I can't renew my permit. So, I mean, I could renew my permit, but what good would that do me? You know, so I have a permit, and then eventually that expires, and without being able to complete my work, then it's to no end.
Now, you say you've had your permit expire several years ago. I know you've done a lot of building over there in the last several years. What about those buildings?
I think they're, I mean, this is, this is a part of the same problem of, you know, having such, you know, controversy and discontent with my project, you know? Like, a big problem is just communication. You know, like, I think a lot of people have ideas of I'm doing something I shouldn't be doing over there, but yet I haven't been able to sit down with anybody and talk about it. You know, like, I haven't had a good relationship with City Hall to where I can just say, "Hey, I have a problem concerns. Let's sit down and talk about it. Let's work it out." And so I'll give you an example. We've had, so I had a set of plans that was probably 10 or 12 pages long. And in 2010, when I submitted this original set of plans, these plans had the, you know, this tall support building, the water tower, as well as my main warehouse. That was all on the same plan. I submitted it to the city of Vader, it was approved. It went on to the county, it was approved. And then, so I started building. And I didn't find out until people complained about it and then mentioned this to the county. The county tells me, "Well, we never approved the water tower or that red and white building. You know, that's, you're building that without a permit." And I thought, "Well, that's news to me, you know? It's on my plans. You approved my plans." And they're like, "Well, we approved the plans, but we didn't actually look at those two things." I'm like, "Well, that's great. So what am I supposed to do about that?" And so they're like, "Well, we admit that we should have looked at them, but we didn't look at them." And so what happens normally is you build something, and then your inspector comes out, and, you know, you have a footing or you have a foundation. They come out, they sign up on that. You go, "Well, they've been signing off on that stuff the whole time." And I had no idea that they never looked at that stuff, but they hadn't apparently. So that's what I mean. There are a lot of misunderstandings, and I think that has accrued in simple communication. And I've been told by the current building, what is his title, Ron's title?
Ron Kemp. He's our city engineer.
No, he's the building official.
Building official.
So he presented me with a list of everything I need to do to get my permitting into compliance, and I'm certainly interested in doing all that stuff. So it's not like we can't inspect the stuff that's built there. I mean, none of the, none of the stuff is finished, it's just framed. So, you know, I have, you know, when I submitted all that stuff originally, it was drawn and it was engineered, the whole thing. So I think, you know, he led me to believe that we just look at that, we inspect it, we, you know, bring the permits up to speed, and then away we go. So I didn't, I didn't see anything on the list of stuff he had that I thought was insurmountable or something that we couldn't take out.
Yeah, well, that's an interesting rendition of the history. And it may not be an appropriate forum to go back and try to compile. Well, I just won't make any other commentary, but the fact of the matter is, at this moment in time, thanks to the previous city councils over the years, the city has now divested itself of Lewis County. And if your permits have expired, it may be some And if your permits have expired, it may be somewhat fortuitous, because Lewis County no longer has any involvement in the City of Vator permit process. And so I know, Mr. Milton, you gave me assurances that your intention was to, and our city attorney has gone through the history of this permitting process, and she's prepared what I think is a very accurate depiction of the permitting drama that has taken place. But the document that she's prepared is, articulates in chronological order, or at least in order, of what permits need to be acquired and complied with. And we do have our employee, Ron Kemp, who is cooperative and reflects the city administration need that we be in compliance with these permits. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but in the conversation that we had last week, you gave me solemn assurances that you intended to adhere to those.
That's correct. Yes.
And I, I take that as word. I, I think that we have the structure, infrastructure in place to ensure, as any code city would, we can say that with confidence, that we have them in place, and I, I think we have the competency to ensure that it happens.
So if, if Brandon goes and complies with all of the codes for his buildings that are in question, whichever ones those are, then he should be able to get water?
Yeah.
Is, is that what I'm hearing? No.
No, that's, there's, there are steps involved, but there's no guarantee of that, but.
Can I clarify? The water, the, if I understand correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, the water issue is between the property owner and the water system, the water system owners, which is the county. He is correct in that in order to get occupancy for his building, which is the final step, he does have to have water available. So he is going to have to get that ironed out with the county before he can get occupancy in his building. He does not need to have water in order to get the permits up to date and to get the structures inspected and as far as they can go before the occupancy. Because we do have a huge water tower that has been installed, and nobody knows how, none of the city or the building official knows how that has been, how the foundation is, and if it's sufficient, and if it's even safe. And so my understanding of the building codes is that if you have a building project open, you need to have a current permit, and if you don't, then the building has to be shut down and secured, and the site has to be secured so that no one's allowed on it because there's not occupancy. So I don't know, maybe that's some clarification that needs to be made with the building official, but that was my understanding of that. And so that's my, my concern in thinking about waiting on the permits. So maybe that's something that we can talk about. But what, what I'm curious about is, in the conversations that I've been involved in, which have just been a couple of them with you in the water department, it seemed to me that they set out some specific things that needed to happen in order for you to get your water hookup. And I'm interested to know, and I don't know about council, but if, what's holding that up? Can you just do the things that they said? Or is there a problem with doing those things? Or I'm not sure I understand what's holding that up for you.
This may not be a forum in which you want to address this, Brandon.
Well, I can, I can summarize just to say that, that I was sued by the county a couple of years ago to prevent my connection to their water that I was not connected to. So that has given risen, given rise to a couple of years of what's been essentially non-productive dialogue with the county on this. And, you know, it would be simple if they just said, we're never going to connect your water, but they don't say that. They say, we'd love to connect your water if you just do this, that, and the other. And I say, okay, well, what's this, that, and the other? And then it turns into this, like, moving goalpost that I have not been able to do. And it's certainly not for lack of trying. I mean, you know, I don't think anyone needs to understand the specifics of it, but anyone could, could realize that I've had an entire project on hold for years now because of this. So, I mean, I could have built three water mains in the, you know, for the amount of time and, you know, physical cost and opportunity cost that I had squandered on this water situation. So if there's a, I mean, I, I'm asking for help on this. I mean, to be honest, I, I don't know what I can do with the county to, to have them turn my water on. So it, you know, if, if any of the stuff I've talked about this evening is an impediment, then, then maybe it's that simple, and we can move on from there. If, if there's another solution that, that the city has, I'm, I'm open to that. You know, there, there, there are multiple ways to get water, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm open to anything. So whatever, whatever solution looks like, that, you know, my goal is to get water. So, you know, to, to answer Jill's question about permitting, I mean, the, the water is an important piece of this puzzle to, to finish the development. And it's, it's, it's not for lack of willingness or desire to, to either fulfill any of the obligations of my permit or finish the project. I just need a, you know, the water is, is a big deal. So if I have water, then the rest of this is easy.
And it's out of our hands.
Although, yeah, I don't want to, we shouldn't over, overcomplicate things. I, I'm inclined, we're not going to decide or make any declarative sense. I think it'd be unwise in a public meeting that's being recorded. We, we're still embracing this startling disclosure. But I can't imagine, since I'm the individual responsible to ensure that our ordinances and permits are complied with, that it wouldn't have a positive influence on the county if they could discern that you are complying with standard permitting processes. I don't think it's going to hurt. And not to mention the fact that each, each month that passes, we're one month closer to getting our water system back from Lewis County. However long it may take you to comply with the permits, it may be about the same time that we could get the system back, in which case, suddenly, the city, you follow me, but...
May I ask, has Ron been out to look at this tower, whatever it is we're talking about? He has?
Yeah, he, he took a tour of the whole property. Yeah, it was like, I don't know, a couple months ago.
Yeah, a month ago.
It's impossible for him to evaluate how it was installed and what the foundation is like. Normally, there's a plan that states what the, how it's going to be built, and that, I think that's what was missing from the plan, which is why the county was saying it wasn't permitted.
No, it wasn't missing, it was on there.
Not, not the foundation, not the, not the detail?
I have a pretty bit of that detail on there.
Okay.
I mean, I could get you a copy.
I have a copy of it, the county sent it to me, but, and I have the copy that you gave the city with your initial permit. But the, the point is that Ron can't tell by looking at the structure.
That would surprise me, Jill, respectively, because he's a building codes person. Well, that's what he said. He should be able to look at the print and the size of the foundation or whatever.
That's the problem, is that there's not that much detail.
Okay, well, if Brandon can provide one, then I would think that would help the conversation a little bit more.
Sure, if he can provide it.
So I guess my question.
At this point, we don't have it, so.
I guess my question is, is what is it we can do for you? I mean, there must be...
I really don't have a big ask, you know, like, I'm, I'm just wanting to update you, I want to be available for questions. You know, if I have a request, I just want to feel like I'm, I'm getting along, and I'm able to be responsive to, to, you know, as you can see, we just have questions and misunderstandings. I mean, if we need to put a set of prints in front of us and look at it together, and I can point out what, what we need to see, then that, that's exactly what I want to do, to try to feel like we're working together. I mean, I just want to feel like we're pulling on the same rope to, to get to a, a vision that we can all agree on, and...
Okay. Well, well, with that, I, I, I stand ready to ensure that the best interests of the community are adhered to, that our, our building official, who I, I believe has the competency, as you mentioned, to ensure that, that the permits be monitored sufficiently well, will set in motion plans to do that, and will keep the council advised. And if perhaps, to conclude this, I would extend to, to Mr. Milton, or speaking for myself, I know individually, you probably have different thoughts, but I for one am greatly impressed at your, your change of heart, and that I'm going to stand ready to assist in any way that's legally available to me to assist you in this process.
I appreciate that support, that means a lot to me.
And with that, thank you very much for this presentation. Now, we had a member of the public that had a comment earlier, it's gone for quite a while, but I know Mrs. Flynn, you were one of them, I know Mrs.
I was trying to refer her.
Wait, no, I think we had Mrs. Flynn, was Joy Flynn? You were signed up to make a, did you want to make a statement, yeah?
I had, I have a question. Or I just have to do a statement? Okay, just a statement?
Yeah.
This is question and answer time.
Well, he kind of.
Covered it.
Covered that, yes.
Okay, good.
I just was against drugs, no marijuana, I'm very...
Okay, you were going to say that. Do you want to hear from one more member of the public who raised their...
Certainly.
Sorry.
I just want Mr. Milton to know, I mean sincerely, if he is sincere, if you are sincere, I welcome you to our community, and I'd be the first one to forgive and forgive, nothing against German auto parts or Japanese auto parts or any Florida auto parts. I just want you to know, as a private citizen in this town, that I really would support you and your company, your family, your employees, if this is truly what you intend to do. I'm with you.
Thank you, Holly.
All right, then, thank you very much, Ben. Let's, we'll be in touch.
And you guys have questions for me, please, let me know. If it's a Bellevue private, I'm certainly open to that.
Perfect.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's, it is now quarter to seven, 45 minutes, and let's proceed with, this is item number two, a report by Councilwoman Costello. And this is what we thought was going to be somewhat straightforward, has now become complexified. So would you like to just...
Certainly. Tonight, I am requesting from my council members for a five-month leave of absence. I will be going to Georgia to care for my family. I have no intention of forfeiting my position, and would just request that you try to look through what the attorney gave us and possibly come up with a solution while I'm gone. I'm happy to do anything that you choose to do. If you would like to do a pro temp council person, I was originally read through the RCWs and thought that was the appropriate thing to do, but the attorney has given you a lot of other options, and it's also been made very clear to me that I am not, I will not be voting on any of the options that you choose, if you choose to vote on it while I'm here. I will be leaving on the sixth, or excuse me, the fifth of June. Yes, Joe?
One of the options is that you would be, you are allowed to call in and be on council meeting via, via phone. Is that something that you're able to do?
Are you willing to do that?
Yes, I believe I would be. I mean, I, I don't foresee any reason why I could not do that. Let's see, six, seven, eight. It would be, I'm two and a half hours ahead of you, though.
Drink a Red Bull.
Yeah, but no, but no, telephone is fine with me. I, I would agree to that, if that would be one of your choices.
Yeah.
Sure.
Oh, I was just going to ask, do you have access to receiving the documents online? Because we'd have to email or whatever them to you.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's okay that we contact Judy Costello via telephone for our next nine meetings after she's on, after she's on leave of absence.
Well, that's...
Did I open the discussion to the public?
No, not, not yet, but I haven't had a chance to read this.
Not me either.
You don't have to decide tonight.
But we do have a motion.
And since I don't vote on it at all, you know?
The attorney did make it clear that you would not have a vote on it.
Correct.
But we've had a, a quick motion by a member of the council to, what was the motion again?
To allow Judy to be contacted via phone during her absenteeism.
To participate in the council meeting via telephone.
Okay. So you've heard a motion by Mr. Daly to approve her absence contingent upon her contacting the city council meeting by phone. Do we have a second for that?
I have a second.
Okay, and it's seconded by Mr. Wilson. And now would be your opportunity to provide other commentary on that motion. Oh, we do have a member of the, of the audience who would like to make a comment, council.
Yes. When you run for city council, you also have to intermingle with the city people to stay abreast of what's going on in the city, to, to bring things up to the council so you know what's going on, to report back, to take on extra tasks. And if you're away for nine meetings, you're not going to be, you're not going to know what's going on. You're going to be totally disconnected except for the paperwork you receive before meetings. Now, that's not why people vote you in office, they're going to take a trip. Now, we, everybody here takes a week off, or two weeks off, or something like that, but to take five months off, and it's probably the busiest time in the city, you're pulling yourself out of what you've been voted to do. So with that comes a consequence. Everything we do has consequences. So if you decide to take off for five months, I think it's great she gets to go see her family for five months, but you're, you're backing away from what you've been elected to do. And I think that should be considered very seriously, because if you're not here, you can't do your job. And your job is more than just calling in at a meeting and voting.
But it's a legal option. Our, our city attorney has dissected this, and the RCWs are painfully thin. There's not detailed instruction, but our city attorney, who's a sitting member of the city council of Bellevue, has had experience with this, and she knows that these are your legal options. And so this is an option that would be sufficient. However, if she were sitting here, if she repeatedly told me today, I mean, that's when I've just gotten her counsel, is that this is highly unusual, extremely rare. She's never heard of it, to be honest with you. And so for someone, an elected official to be absent for this long is extraordinary. And it is, I mean, we don't want to minimize or maximize it, but it is a solution.
And, and this is perfectly fine, and I respect all of your opinions on how you handle this and what your decisions are. I mean, if you, if you choose that, that this position needs to be filled, I'm okay with that. My family comes first to me.
Yeah, it, it clear this stage right here, that many, many councils operate this way when council members are absent. And I, I'm, I feel the same way. I mean, family comes first, but Judy is such a big part of this community that I don't think she can be away for two years and not know what's going on in this town. that I don't think she can be away for two years and not know what's going on in this town.
Okay, all right, we do have another member of the public who's expressed interest in making a comment on here.
I'd like to make a comment on that, I would, in response to his comment. I have to say that I've lived here for twenty-one years, and I have never one time had a city council member mingle with me on what's going on with the city. Ever. So, I feel if any of you are going to, if there's an emergency or whatever, I don't know, Judy, I have no idea what it is, by all, by all means, family is first. I know.
No, and the engineer, I agree, family is first also.
No, we need to get approval. Okay, so, I know we had one more, a hand raised, the council, entertaining more comments.
I also believe family is first, and I would make a decision for my family over and above the city any day of the week. So there's no comment there. It just, we've had people before who were out of town for six months, and in town for six months, and they could not run for council because they couldn't be here for six months. That was a choice that people made, because they couldn't be at the meetings, they didn't run for council. And that's, makes a lot of sense, because they're not here involved with what's going on in the city. I don't care who it is. But if the person's not gonna be here for almost half a year, not quite a half a year, but almost a half a year, they're not involved with what's going on in the city, and they can't be making decisions. It's like playing a computer game, you're not really involved, but you're answering their questions.
More, more comments?
I have a problem. My only concern about phoning in remotely, I have, at work, we have meetings remotely with people around the world, it's very difficult. It is difficult to carry on a meeting over the phone like that, you know, there's a two-way conversation. And so that would be, that would be a challenge.
It would be, because you would always be having to say, Judy, what do you want to do? Or someone would have to, you know, speak the phone or whatever. And so, think about that phone thing. And disconnections. I mean, I agree with Joe, a lot of things can happen with the phone thing. The other options were excused or whatever. Keep in mind also, when you're making your decisions, that budget time isn't far away. Wastewater treatment plant decisions, I'm not trying to sway you one way or the other, but I, and I know I don't get to vote, but I think somebody sitting in my little seat right here would be an excellent choice as a pro temp council person, who would, for the five months, you know, be able to get involved with it. I totally understand what Joe said, truthfully, I mean, phone is great. We did a couple while Janet was away, actually, if you remember. Janet was on the phone a couple times when she couldn't make it. But, but, you know, and that was kind of difficult, because we were always asking, are you still there? So I see that as maybe a little cumbersome, but.
Can we try it and then choose to make a change two meetings from now if it's not working?
Yes.
That's a good question. We'd have to ask, you have?
My understanding from reading the document and also the conversations I've had with the attorney is that whatever decision you make, it's probably wise to make it every three meetings. Because that's the cutoff, the criteria for a council position becoming vacant is missing three meetings. And so, it sounded to me, if I understood what Jennifer was saying correctly, is that, you know, you can make a decision, but if you were going to, like, let's say you were gonna excuse her and just not fill the seat or whatever, that you should have a motion excusing her every three meetings, so that it's an ongoing process.
Is that written somewhere in here?
I think she put it in there.
It's right at the first. It was the very first one.
We can clarify that with her, I, again, it's one of those things that's not written in stone, like you were saying, Mayor, but I think she was suggesting that it's a good idea to, to do that. And you can make changes halfway through, I mean, there's no reason why you couldn't. My understanding is that, you know, if you try something and it doesn't work, try something else.
So Judy, are you willing to, even though with the time difference, to call in and?
Yes. Yes, I'm willing to do that, I'm willing to try to do that process.
Okay, Mr. Wilson.
I think, to me, it just happened many, many years ago with, with, oh my gosh. James Charlton's uncle, James Shanahan, excuse me. But anyway, what the attorney says here, I'm gonna say it's all right, and this is the way we should follow it. We've had to follow this attorney's advice before, I would say we follow the attorney's, attorney's advice and let it go as fast.
Okay, all right, any other comments? Or none, let's put the motion to a vote. So, the motion again was to excuse her absence for the period contingent upon her contacting the city council meeting, every city council meeting.
So actually, it wouldn't be an excused absence, it would be that she's not missing them, because she would be participating telephonically. So it would not be an excused absence, she wouldn't be absent.
But she, yeah, that wasn't specifically stated, but it's an absence.
No, not if she's contact, not if she's with us by phone.
I'll have to read this down.
If she's with us by phone, then it's not an absence, but council would have to agree to allow her to do it by phone. So that's the motion.
Yeah, I can capture the concept, okay, all right, well then, with that explanation, let's put it to a vote. All in favor of said motion, say aye.
Aye.
Was that three, one, two, three? I didn't hear Mr..
Aye.
Oh, okay. Okay, so those opposed, so indicate. Nay. None, okay, it was four to zero in unanimous support of that motion. So the motion is carried. All right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
All right, then, the, let's proceed with item number three. Council to consider release of retained funds to Nortech Inc. I think this is a pretty pro forma function, it shouldn't require a lot of discussion. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review it.
I'll make a motion, I'll read the thing. I move to release retained funds to Nortech Incorporated in the amount of $2,857 for contract work relating to the community development block grant project for sit sewer replacements phase two, and direct the city clerk to issue payment in the stated amount.
Okay, have you heard the motions bitted, as read by Mr. Shai? Seconded by Mrs. Preer. Any additional comments? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion is carried. Update on the wastewater treatment operator backup services. And in case you're confused about that, I don't specifically recall if we've discussed this issue on our council meetings.
Yeah, you weren't here at the last one, Lonnie came and.
Yes, right, that's why I've got this mental blank.
We've talked about it.
Yeah, the mayor of Winlock was here, for heaven's sake. Okay, so then you realize that, I think that there's some concern when Mr. Peltier has to be on vacation, or wants to go on vacation, or may have some affliction that would impact his availability, that we need to have certified coverage. And so that is what's prompting this memorandum of understanding. And I'm not going to make any particular commentary on it. Hopefully, you have a chance to review it.
There's nothing to review, it was just an update, that's all, it's just an update is what it says. So I just wanted to let council know where we were at with it, is that we are continuing to work on that interlocal agreement with Winlock. It hasn't been finalized yet, but we're continuing to work on it. And the city is also working to get our other public works employee trained to the point where he may be able to fill in for some or all of the work that Ned is doing if he were to miss on a temporary basis. So ideally, at some point, we would have a second employee that could do most or all of the testing on a short-term basis, that would be allowed by Department of Ecology. And then we wouldn't need the interlocal, but in the meantime, we will leave the interlocal, so we're continuing to put that together, and we'll present it to you as soon as it is ready.
So, so the interlocal wouldn't hurt to have it anyway?
Yeah, I agree, it makes sense, it's a backup security fund. Very anxious, I'm sure Mr. Lonnie, the mayor of Winlock, would love to have it. So, and I've spoken, we had employees meeting yesterday, and I spoke with Mr. Fleet, Flat, who is willing to undergo the training necessary to become qualified for which is a change of perspective on his part. So that's, thank you for that. Any questions? Or none, let's proceed with, this has been an ongoing agenda item. Council discussion about animal control.
The discussion is the big black dog over on the corner of Main Street that came leaping out at Rex a couple days ago. And I have a big beige dog over on A Street that will not let me down the alley. So my question is, what, we've got people that are trying to walk around town. My tenants no longer can go down the alley to get to church. And I know that might sound strange to some folks, but that's her path to get to church. And the dog will not, and the dog is just vicious, it barks, it's very intimidating. And, and I yelled at the man, you must put that dog on a leash, you must do something, and all he said to me was, what? So, he, he needs to be spoken to, and it's at Sharon Keith's old house, the little house.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
He appears to be a single man living there and.
We have a leash law.
We do, but what are we gonna do about it?
It's unfortunate that the city council feels like this is a forum to address those issues, but it's important that the public, I suppose, to be aware of your awareness. But, or a very effective sheriff's department, I'm sure if they were notified at the moment that the dog was barking and snapping, they would respond. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I see we catch the malicious offender in the act. That will put some teeth to the enforcement.
Otherwise, it's just hearsay, you know, according to.
Oh my, okay.
Although, if there is a complaint, if there's a complaint issued to City Hall in the form of a written complaint or a phone call complaint, we can send out notices to the locations informing them that there has been a complaint about this. These are the laws, we just want to let you know, because they will be enforced, kind of thing. And a lot of times, that type of letter, people will go, oh, I didn't realize that, and straighten out, and take care of it, but. You need to have the details of the information in the form of a complaint. It can be an anonymous complaint, if someone wants to do it anonymously, but.
But that's an important education point, and we all, elected officials, should know that there's, the complaint forms are there, and that there will be responsiveness to them. It's discomforting to sense that, there's a sense of futility there. My interaction with the county sheriff's department is they're very responsive. And so, let's give them a shot, let's, let's put them to the test. All right, now we do have a comment from a member of the public.
The, what the question I guys that put out there is, I've been told that they won't do anything unless they hear it or see it. So if you get a complaint from the City Hall.
Well, yeah, but I've heard that Elvis Presley is alive on Mars. I say we put it to the test, and let's, if you hear, if you see that dog running loose, and he is barking and snapping at somebody, let's write a complaint, it may be the next day that they show up, but I, my experience is that they will go to the residence, and you'll knock on the door, what would be it?
That's right, if the dog is out and after somebody, call and, they will have somebody come down.
Just do it.
And don't tell them it's not an emergency, tell them it is, I mean, if a dog is coming at you, that's a life and death situation. And if you tell them it's something in, happening right now, they will come right now. If you tell them, well, it's not that big of a deal, you can come down later, then they won't see the animal in action. So they have to be able to see that it's happening in order for them to do something, as police officers, if I'm understanding correctly, other than informing. The other thing officers can do is help inform the residents, the same way as a letter can help inform the residents, so.
Yeah, we've got the ordinances in place, and we've got the enforcement entities, so let's use them.
Don't be shy. I guess I did not know the rules.
This council has approved a fund, if there's a dog needs to be transported to the Humane Society, it will cover the cost of their accepting that animal. So, let's do it. Two more, obviously concerned comments, we're at seven oh eight, are we okay for more comments? All right, quick two comments.
I sympathize and I respect what's being said here. My daughter was attacked by a pack of vicious dogs in a small town. If it wasn't for her brother there grabbing a, you know, a thing and fighting them off, it could have been all worse. Now, I'm wondering if Mrs. Costello cannot write this letter or complaint tonight. It doesn't have to be, oh, this is the situation on the form, and then it's documented, because more people who documented, and they did, they did go to court, and they did have to get rid of the dog, and the lady who owned the dog was defensive to the end, never spoke to me again, but so be it, but why don't we just find out?
I plan to be very busy tomorrow morning writing complaints. I have a plan.
Form a job security.
Costello, Costello.
One more quick comment.
My question is, why do we have leash laws if nobody in the city of Vader, like, enforces them?
Oh my word, I thought we were talking about enforcement actions. Right? A complaint is written, it's submitted to City Hall, they are going to respond. That is the enforcement.
But when they're not always around.
They are always on duty, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five.
They're not always in the limits, but they are always on duty.
But you're gonna have to know where the animals from, the houses from.
If there is a stray animal, and you have it, and you call and say, there's a stray animal here, that we have a fund to take that animal, to pay to take that animal to the shelter. And then it's the owner's responsibility to track down their dog, or their dog gets released to somebody else.
I was, I was commenting on the complaint, if you're complaining, and it's in the alley, you don't know which house you filed a complaint with you, who are you gonna send him to, up and down the alley looking for the dog?
Sometimes that's the case, that's why, in those cases, it's important to call 911 if it's happening right now. Because then the officer can come and see the dog, and handle the situation, and try to track it down that way. You're right, a complaint, to me, is only effective if we know where to send it. So, although it could be the case, I know it's one of these houses on this street, I could send it to all the houses on the street, you know, the notice. send it to all the houses on the street, you know, the notice. But that's why it's important when, if it's something that's happening right now, call 911 so that the officer can get there right now and take care of it at the time. It's much easier to handle that way.
Yes.
There's a lot of people in town. Yesterday morning, 8:30, one of the officer in control that are doing something. But where I sit, I have the most visibility of anybody in town and I spend a lot of time out in town. This is why when it came to our ordinance to hire the Lewis County Sheriff's Department, I was the first one to make the motion because of that. I see them, period. And a lot of people don't see them and you can't get against them for not seeing them, but they aren't sitting in the right place at the right time.
I would not trade our law enforcement contract with any of the other small cities in Lewis County. They do not have the responsiveness, genuinely, and there's little or nothing they can do about it. For us to have the contract that we've got is unique and we're truly fortunate to have that.
Our citizens do not, excuse me, our citizens do not understand in our budget, we're saving almost eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars a year, isn't that correct?
Absolutely. We pay seventy-two thousand, you can look at the public records and compare our law enforcement budget with Toledo and Winlock and Napa Vine, Mossy Rock, and check the math and then get back with us. It's important. Okay, so.
The same go for the cats too.
If a cat is threatening you, yes.
Steve, the scared cats.
If a cat is threatening you, absolutely. The bird is attacking you, yes.
Cougar especially.
Yes.
One piece of advice, almost everybody has a cellphone nowadays that takes a picture with a camera. If you see the dog off of its property aggressively going after you chasing your car or whatever, if you take a picture with your cellphone, that's very helpful to identify the dog, not just a black dog that might have been in the alley somewhere. It's like the guy riding his bicycle, which guy, there's ten of them riding their bikes. So a photograph with your cellphone is a great tool to help us out.
Yeah, excellent, thank you for that. All right. Well, hopefully that has cleared up some of the issue. Shall we move along to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, council discussion about parking at City Hall.
Hello, Jason.
Well, parking at City Hall, we've taken some measurements, had some help, had some measurements taken, which I asked Jill about the.
The easement.
The easement. It's in, it's in process.
It's a forty street, forty foot wide street. There's your easement. It's partially vacated, so there's forty feet now.
From the center?
Yeah, that doesn't necessarily mean that the center of the road we see is in the center of the easement, but I can't, I mean, the roads aren't always exactly on the center line, sometimes they're off to one side or another of the easement, so. But in theory, it's a forty, not in theory, it is a forty-foot easement, it's just, we think it's in the middle of the easement.
Okay.
I don't think it'd be very expensive.
No.
No, I don't think so either.
Yeah, were we gonna get free bids on that though?
We would have to, yeah.
So I think we're ready actually to contact.
Okay. Great, I'll look forward to that documentation so I can send it off to some people and see what we can get.
That would be nifty.
Perfect. Are you doing just one side or both sides?
Well, I just got my head wrapped around both sides tonight and so we'll have to see.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Excellent, thank you. All right, number seven. Council discussion about fee schedule options for nonprofit organizations. This topic raises its head at least once every year.
Just comes up and bites ya.
About the May Day time.
It's right up and bites ya.
So what is this item?
Well, I, this item, I think, we talked about this while you were gone at the last meeting, Mayor. We have McMurphy Park, which we all love. But the bottom line is, is it's not a developed park at this point. We don't have any covered areas, we don't have power, we don't have water, all we can offer someone is a porta potty. And we have a barbecue.
A nicely manicured hayfield.
In a nicely manicured hayfield. Okay, okay. So to go around and, so I think our fee schedule just is, is this kind of wonky because we have like a hundred, up to five hundred dollars, you know? What are we thinking here?
Well, it's my big idea.
Well, I know, you guys, what are we thinking? What are we thinking on all this fee schedule for this stuff and?
Well, I have a picture of Mrs. McMurphy with me dancing down there on the first function after I got it done and she was very happy. Because I knew Mrs. McMurphy since day one. And she was very happy with McMurphy Park after we got part of it done before I left the park. But anyway, to me, Mrs. McMurphy, I still love you. And I think that what we should do is a motion that nonprofit organizations, as long as they're putting their own electricity and fortifies down there and et cetera, that we not charge a nonprofit organization for any, any use of Murphy Park. Thank you, dear.
Well, and that's fine, I'm okay with that. But I have, I still have issues. And I'm gonna throw number eight in on the issues with it, so we can just talk about all this at once. Here's my thought. The word says public park. And we as a city have a blanket insurance policy. All right, is everybody with me?
Are we missing?
Okay. If I take thirty of my best friends down there to the barbecue, I suddenly am an event. And you want fifty dollars or a hundred dollars because I have, now it classifies me event.
No.
No, that's not correct.
Scheduled it, no.
Well, I'm gonna schedule it.
Well, if you, if you, if you want to reserve part of the park.
Okay.
So that it's only for you and your thirty friends, that becomes an event.
Okay, okay.
That is correct. If you and thirty of your friends say, "Hey, let's meet down at McMurphy Park, let's go," and you go, that's not an event.
Okay, so I've scheduled my event and I've got it on the calendar, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Why do, why would I have to have an insurance policy? To cover my thirty friends down there having a good time?
It's a city park and it's city-controlled and the city is responsible to ensure that those who reserve it and schedule it and have received a permit to do that, be covered by city insurance.
Not city insurance.
Well, the RMSA, the Risk Management Services Agency, is the entity that provides that insurance. We spend how much per year on that?
About thirteen thousand. The insurance that the city has, this is an insurance question, and I'll try to give you the best answer I know, but it probably best to contact them to find out exactly the details why. But my understanding of it is that the city's insurance covers public city use, public people coming in, using the park, come and go residents, you know, whatever. But once you have, and once you create an event, our insurance doesn't cover special events. Why? I don't know. That's why there's an additional rider needed for a specific event. You'd have to ask the insurance company why. I can ask them why in more detail.
And do most cities, and do most cities use the MR?
There's two approved Association of Washington City Insurance Companies. One is the CIA, the Community Insurance Agency, nice title.
The ACIA, I don't know.
Like Washington. Then the other is RMSA. And it specializes in small communities like ours. And so it's your two options.
So.
Not all the cities follow that rule.
That was my next thing.
That's correct, but they are also not covered for those events.
Okay, so that's probably my point I'm trying to get to. Our surrounding sister cities do not do that. So that's.
Some of them do, some of them do not. The bigger cities you'll find especially do it because they know and they, and they have a lot more.
Which cities are you referring to?
Toledo does not have, you can rent their park.
Oh, I got you, but they have their own insurance.
Right, 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 they do, they do. See, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out this, this little, little thing here that.
Facilities to rent.
Exactly, exactly, but the insurance part of it for the person renting for this thing. And what I'm gonna do is, is I'm just gonna go ahead and spit it out here. Sandy McGuinness is having a wedding at McMurphy Park. And she's now being requested to get an insurance rider, policy rider.
That was on her application when she got it months and months and months ago, that there would be insurance required. So it's not news, that's on the application form, so.
I guess my question, my next question is, and this kind of brings up that packet thing, that there's so much to our packet that goes to the last moment. One of those last moment things that we need to, that, well, I just, I just worry that, you know, I got involved in it, but Sandy's a citizen over there and she's now questioning, I mean, she's already printed her invitations, but now she's questioning what to do at the last minute here with this insurance policy that she was not fully aware of. So that's the reason why I'm just asking this number eight, event and insurance.
She got the same packet that you guys got for the May Day event.
Yes, I understand that.
And that has a list of all the information and all the requirements. But sometimes people lose those and then they come back at the last minute and say, "Now I have to do all this at the last minute."
Okay, and I know what, and I know what you're referring to on that.
That's not.
But I believe, I believe Sandy did hers in January or February and she's just now finding out, so.
The information was in the documents that I gave her in January.
I, and I understand, and I don't want to debate with you, Jill, please don't.
I'm just saying, you're saying.
Yes, 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 I don't want, no.
But you're saying that people need to get the information ahead of time. You are getting it ahead of time, you're just choosing not to pay attention to it.
Well, I.
Until I finally have to say, you know, "We're getting close, let's do something about this," and then suddenly Jill's being a jerk, she's making everybody do everything.
I never, I never said that or replied that, I just was, I'm just saying that it would be nice that if we had the packet and it was approved ahead of time.
In what way?
Well, Janet and I were approved an hour before. What would be different would be thirty, my thought is, my thought is, is that we would have the packet in all its entirety, as with Sandy, have the packet and it would be required that you have it completely finished thirty days before your event. That would then, there's no confusion and there's no questions and all of these concerns come up. I mean, I fully, I fully acknowledge that we did not have our paperwork done for May Day with Jill. I fully took responsibility for that.
Did you have it well?
Yes, yes, and I, yes, that, that we took responsibility for.
So are you suggesting that in the packet we say thirty day, this packet must be completed in its entirety thirty days, thirty days before the event?
Exactly, and I think that would be absolutely perfect for everybody, that way then whenever, you know.
And if it's not, then?
You're not going anywhere. Your function's not going anywhere. I think that, you know, and a checklist, I think it'd be really nice to have a checklist on there, make sure you have your insurance certificate, you know, it has to be here. It's just a more complete packet needs to come about.
Is the packet, I have never seen the packet, I've never scheduled an event, is, was it something that we put together or is it recommended from the insurance company, is that who put it together?
It's a combination.
It is, it's very detailed, you know, yeah, it's nice.
But it's not excessive.
It's not, no, no, it's easy to fill out.
Pretty understandable.
Can we just tweak it then?
It'd be easy to add that phraseology. I think in actuality it might be a good idea because frankly, you can obviously tell the sensitivity of our city clerk who gets accused, I think absolutely, if it were to go to court, the accusers would have a hard time proving that the city is remiss in giving them the paperwork and available to explain what is required.
Well, I'm all for making things easier on our city staff. And if we can tweak some papers to make life easier, then we should do it.
Yeah, I just, I think that would be absolutely perfect, that way everybody, you know.
We do have a comment?
I think.
Here's my issue. January 12th, I wrote a check for a hundred dollars deposit for the park. Three days after January 12th, let me give you a week, three days to seven days, that check was cashed. Never one time heard nothing from the city as to whether or not it had been approved, nothing. I was asked to come in and let Jill know what part of the park I wanted rented. Okay? I hadn't done that at the time because that's when we were having all the flooding, yada, 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 I was gonna drive down there, we're in the park. So when it started getting nicer, I went down there.
I have to, in all due respect, my sense is that you've got the packet and materials, right?
This is the paper that I received.
Are we trying to prove a point that the paperwork wasn't received on a timely basis?
My issue is the insurance. That's my huge issue.
So is it related to the topic that the council?
The whole thing is related to the topic, yes.
We're talking about the line item, expect, expected response on that form, but we're talking about a concern about the timeliness of it. Could this not, this topic be addressed at City Hall during the workday?
I'm getting there.
Because we have to focus on the topic of the agenda. If you listen, she'll explain, she tried doing it at City Hall. Okay, I am listening, but I'm not entirely clear that what you're saying is pertinent to the council's agenda item.
My issue is, is why do we have to have insurance on a wedding? I can understand if the car club has to have insurance because of all those cars, I get that. I am having a personal wedding, I should not have to have insurance on the whole park when I'm not responsible for all of them. I'm not reserving the whole park. So if random people come to the park, I should not be responsible for them.
Do not. Your chariot's for your event and the people at your event, not the whole park. If the rest of the park is covered, I'm in the city's insurance. You would like to look at, these are the two different documents. One of them is a special event application, which is what Ms. Costello got for May Day. And if you see on the back, there's a list of all the documents that are required. And with this, they also receive a nine-page environmental checklist, which is another thing that the insurance company requires. You notice on the front, it says, down at the bottom, in bold writing, "I certify that this event will not be in violation, blah, blah, blah," it goes on to say. "I also agree to obtain insurance with limits and coverage as required by city administration. The city shall remain as additional insured with respect to all coverage. By applying for this permit, the organization or entity obtaining approval agrees to defend, indemnify, hold harmless, blah, 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 blah."
harmless, blah, 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 the information is here, there is not a date that says you have to have it to us two weeks ahead, three weeks ahead, four weeks ahead, if you guys want to include that, we can do that, that's fine.
Yeah, that's what you were getting at, that's what it was, no.
The next one is the park application, it has the exact same verbiage, it doesn't have a list of documents because it's a different type of event, and so it doesn't require the huge list of documents, but it says the same thing, uh, I also agree to obtain insurance with limits and coverage as required by the city administration, the city shall be named as additional insured with respect to coverage, they all sign this, this is their application, they sign it, they're agreeing to that, they cannot come to me and say they did not know, it's there, read the document that you signed, if you have a problem with it, it's fine, if the city wants to go without insurance for these types of events, that's the city's choice, so you're putting the city...
Excuse me, you get the approval of the council before, this is not a cross-examination thing, I, I, I think that the council ought to respond to what you've just heard, please.
I think I want to make a comment that, um, I don't want this conversation to get ugly, I mean no disrespect to you, Jill, at all.
I agree with that, that's, I think it's appropriate.
Well, unfortunately, it gets ugly around town, and it comes back to me that it's ugly at me, and I don't think that's fair because I am doing the job that you guys pay me to do, which is to protect the city and to make sure that all the documents that are required to keep the city safe and to not get lawsuits for horses or ponies stepping on little children, that could be some terrible accident that could happen, it's required if you want to be covered, if you're not covered, your citizens can sue you as council people for not requiring the coverage that the insurance company requests.
Yeah, for the last...
I'm just doing my job, people.
For the last nine years, we have dragged this community out of the handshake and a wink and a nod relationship, and there are long-term residents in this community who are very uncomfortable having to adhere to these, um, uh, legalistic requirements if you're gonna be a code city in the state of Washington, and I am sympathetic to individuals, but I, as sympathetic as I am with my legal background and experience in such things, I agree with our city clerk, it's time for the residents of the city of Vator to move past this, um, wink and a nod, a type of, well, uh, let's do it because who wants to fill out a form and pay a fee for it anyway, type of thing, so I'm echoing what you're saying, and these are documents that the mayor and the city, uh, city clerk didn't make, uh, they were approved by, and agreed by a very competent city council, with the advice and consent of our, uh, well-paid city attorney, who's, um, we've had some of the finest city attorney representation in the entire state of Washington, so, uh, I am in full support of what our city clerk has just said, so, we have a comment from a member of our, uh, the council, can I see it now, okay?
So, the only reason that you would get an event, whatever, was so that you would have a part of the park, what, why wouldn't you just go down with your thirty people and have the, the city cover you and have the event, so if other people come in, then who cares? So is there a, is there an amount of people that I can have down there?
That's okay.
Can I have fifty people down there for it?
If you have an organized event where you are filling out, sending out invitations, that makes it an event?
How about if I just say there are some friends coming to have...
That's not an event.
Yeah, that's a good, a very good question.
If you're gonna send out invitations, if you're gonna publicize, if you want to decorate, if you want to bring thing, bring structures into the park, you know, an arbor or something to get married under, if, that's an event.
I, I can't bring an arbor and a cover there, Janet?
I guess not.
I can't bring, um, one of those covers?
Oh, yeah, a tent, like a tent thing, yeah, for temporary use, yeah, but if, if you're doing an event, a wedding is an event, that's, I mean, I don't, I don't know who decides what's an event and what's not, I'm just telling you that, that according to the insurance company, that's an event, and it's not covered under our city insurance, that's why they're required to get their own insurance to cover that, and they have to list the city as additional insured for that event. I don't make the rules, you guys, I'm just following them.
But I think that's a fair question and observation, what is the difference there? And, um, perhaps it would be wise for us to research that and provide that for council's education, uh, any concerns with that?
Can I invite the insurance representative to come down and explain in detail so that I'm not the one that's like, it's Jill's rules and that's not it?
That's so, would the council entertain that as an option? Council is trying to be sensitive to, and I, I pay tribute to, um, Councilwoman Costello, who's, uh, participating in special events in our community and contributing to the overall good, and you're reflecting concerns of the residents.
Well, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around why we have insurance and we continue, I just...
Well, let's, and I think it would be wise if we brought our insurance deal here and explained it, and that we delineate between what's just a private party we're using or that we pay for and what's an event. Okay, oh, we have another comment?
And I understand what you're doing, but wouldn't that depend on what your policy is, what this city's policy is, not just a...
I think it would be, the policy would be clarified by the insurance.
The insurance company does not cover special events, in order to get, no, if we, like, if the city wanted to hold a special event, we'd have to go through another insurance company to get a rider, because our city insurance only covers basic city activity.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying is, it's just like, you going to get insurance of, even through the same company for your car, and me going to get an insurance for my car doesn't mean it's the same policy, doesn't mean it covers the same thing.
Right, but our city...
It would depend on what the city's policy is, not just, this is what it covers, this is what it doesn't, generally, this is what the city's policy covers.
I don't know, I don't know if they have a different policy, but I know for special events that they don't cover special events.
But, um, I, I think that the point is well-taken, that the city is going to probably want to be able to articulate what the difference between an event and a private use.
Yeah, and I understand that, but just, just because it's done here doesn't mean that the next town over, that their policy is the same.
Well, obviously not, because like you were saying, Toledo...
And Winlock.
And don't require this private insurance for a special event, so...
But that's their choice.
Yeah.
Correct. They have, they're also, one of them, at least is an AWC member, and they have the exact same insurance coverage that we have, and they are expected to require that, but they're choosing not to and leaving themselves liable.
So, that is something for the city council to...
Our insurance, our insurance company uses our city as an example, so I don't know if you guys remember, but the very first downhill derby we had, somebody stepped out in front of a runaway car, a member from the public, well-meaning, wanting to help, but stepped out in front of the net and ended up falling and cracking their head, and they had to go away in an ambulance, now, that was a special event, without insurance, without the special event insurance, that would not have been covered by the city's insurance, if he had, if he had turned around and sued the city, he could have sued us and closed the city down.
Well, he did, he tried, but...
No, he didn't try, no, this guy, he ended up not being hurt as badly, and he didn't, no, that's, I think you're confusing that with a police activity that went on where a guy fell and cracked his head, but in any event, the, they use, the, Roger Neal is our, um, risk management specialist for AWC for the state, and he uses the city, and he published it in the latest AWC... I saw that. ...publication, our example, and he says, it's important that we do it, we need to do this, even though people don't like it, you have a responsibility as council to protect the city's money, and if you're not requiring people to be insured for things, then you're just saying, okay, let them sue us, and we don't have any recourse.
Okay, well, obviously, a very important topic, so there'll be some research that we will provide.
You can tell they have me convinced.
Me too.
How'd that get started? I, I have some good news about the park that I'd love to share with council that I just got this afternoon, that they would be excited to hear about.
This is McMurphy?
Yes, um, I got an email from Pat Obermeyer, and you guys can get copies, I just didn't have time to do it, uh, before our council meeting, but, um, we are weeks away from getting the electricity installed in the park, they have figured out the easement issue, all of it's a go, we have the money that's left that needs to be paid, we've had it for years, and we've been just waiting for everything to come together, and he's telling us now, it's coming together, so, um, yeah, good news, hopefully in a matter of weeks, we can get this, we can have, maybe we can have electricity before the end of the summer season, wouldn't that be awesome?
In time for a wedding?
Yeah, uh, I don't know if it'll be in time for the beginning of July, but that's maybe, maybe a few more weeks than that, but who knows, there's always a possibility.
Uh, that is, uh, the second historic announcement in this city council meeting, yeah.
And then the fees will be very important because we'll have to pay for the electricity, and that's what the fees are gonna help pay for, right now the fees all go back into the park fund, so anything, any fees that are paid for park rentals goes right back into making the parks better, so it's not the city's gaining this revenue to spend on whatever, so it all goes back into the park.
Yeah, okay, all right, so, um, any other commentary on that topic?
Jill, the street light's been out for five years.
Is it has to do with the park?
McGuinness is, uh, I'll be going off and on, off and on.
Tell me afterwards where the location is, and I'll get him on it.
I'm ready to go home.
All right, great, and then with that, we'll declare this meeting adjourned.